Hey, everybody. Welcome so much. Thank you for joining us today on Project Next. We're sitting down with Indianapolis City Councilor Jesse Brown, a bold independent Democrat who's made waves by challenging the establishment and standing up for accountability. Jesse was elected in 2023 to represent Indy's east side, running a grassroots campaign that rejected corporate money. He's quickly become known for his willingness to speak truth to power, even when that means confronting people inside his own party. In this episode, we're digging into the recent altercation with state Senator Greg Taylor, who's facing serious accusations from six women, allegations in the Indiana Democratic Party. Despite those claims, party leadership has been slow to act, and Jesse Brown says enough is enough. Together, we're asking tough questions. How do we fight bullies in our own party? Our workplaces or even our personal lives? How do we hold people accountable, no matter their title, and stop the cycle of intimidation and harm? This is about courage, truth, and the future of leadership in Indiana. So stay tuned. Thanks for joining us, Jesse. Thank you so much for being here. How are you doing?
I'm doing all right today. Thanks so much, Sarah. It's always an honor to be on the show.
You were on one other time. We looked it up. It's March. You were on March when we were brand new. So thanks for like taking a chance on a brand new network. And we've been friends ever since. Not close friends. You don't live close to me, but we talk every once in a while. And I, I'm just like, I'm just so thankful that you are actually an elected leader in my state, and you're doing things the right way, and I actually see it working. Like, like you guys, for example, you helped encourage the stop of a data center in Indianapolis, right? Like, I don't know if that would have happened if you weren't on the council, honestly. I don't know. You don't have to, you don't have to, you know, shout out how great you are, but you can. But I'm gonna just say, you are doing this the right way. When you mess up, you come out and say, I'm sorry. Or if you're wrong, you come out and say, I'm wrong, or I didn't. And I just feel like if more of us did this model, we would be in a lot better place. Instead of what politicians typically do, which is mess up and hide it, never admit it, make the mistake worse, deny, 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 blame the other side, blame the other side when it's very obvious that they're messing up. And then we don't like politicians. Shocker.
Yeah, I'm just like that, you know? I was never a politician before. You know, I'm 39 years old. I've been a politician less than two years. So yeah, I'd owned my house for 15 years, paying my mortgage before I ever got into politics. So yeah, I don't think I'm anybody special. I just want to use the time I have as an elected official to speak truth and try to fight for the little guy. And hopefully I get reelected, but if I don't, then I think I'd rather do it right for a short time than stay in office 30 years doing just the bare minimum. So.
And did you take, um, did you, did you learn from like Bernie Sanders? Like, what convinced you to do this?
Yeah, I was always a gigantic fan of Bernie Sanders. And after the 2016 campaign for president, you know, I voted for him at the primary in Indiana. And then, you know, after he dropped out and Hillary Clinton was the nominee, he had that Our Revolution organization. And they encouraged people like, hey, you know, if you are fresh. I ran for state party delegate that year and kind of went into this big confusing room downtown Indianapolis one day and kind of didn't know what I was doing. And I was like, well, I'm not really sure how effective that was. My wife was a precinct committee person. She, she ran for that because of Bernie's advice. She got to do a couple important votes, but decided she couldn't kind of stomach being around all the insiders. And so she said she wasn't ever running.
It is hard.
I ran for precinct committee person. I was doing that for about a year before I decided, you know what, maybe let me just try to run for office for city council. I didn't think I could win because I knew I didn't have any money coming in. But yeah, that's, that's what led me to run and then I.
And you didn't just win, you won by a lot.
I kind of did, yeah.
You're good at using social media. You're good at telling exactly what you want to do if you were elected. And now you're using it to push the party to be better because sometimes the party, our party, the Indiana Democrats, try to silence you. And you just use your voice and your intelligence that using media to, um, to have we the people kind of back you up and stop stuff sometimes.
Well, you're putting it very, very kindly, but.
I just think that, when we're all trying to make our local governments or our state governments, our national governments better, you're actually doing the work with the little bit of power you have. And you're kind of modeling for people like me. I run for state house. You know, I want to be in power and I want to do what you're doing. You help model for us what this looks like. When we want to run, you can only pick two political parties if you want to have a chance. Every once in a while, an independent gets elected, but for the most part, you've got to pick Republican or Democrat. Both sides have major problems. So how do you do it? And I kind of want to dissect that today. So I've been covering the story of Greg Taylor a little bit. Right at the very beginning of Project Next, I did some with Corinne, where we talked about Indiana State Senator Greg Taylor. And I haven't talked about him for a while, and, and Project Next has grown quite a bit. So I wanted to do a story about him. And then I saw your Facebook post. What day was this that this altercation happened?
It was like three weeks ago, a month. In March, but I didn't post about it, or it was an Indy Star finally just earlier this month, I want to say.
Yeah, good job with that.
Thank you. Yeah.
So it happened in March, but you went public with it recently.
That's right. Yeah, exactly.
That's interesting. That makes more sense too, because that's more when, when his news was hitting Indy Star.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I can go through a little bit, but go ahead.
Yeah. So first I want to just explain a little bit about Greg Taylor. And I want you to fill in the gaps that I'm missing. So he's an Indiana State Senator. He has been since 2008. He's a, he's black and he's, I think, the first black man as a Democrat in Indiana as a state senator. I think I read that, or at least as a minority leader, I'm not sure about first state senator. So he's, yeah, so he's a first at some point. And, um, he's had, there was an Indy Star report that came out in November that had three women that worked under him that came out and, um, told their tales of being harassed and sexually assaulted by him. And then a few months later, a second Indy Star report came out with three more women. Greg Taylor of some type of sexual assault and sexual harassment at the workplace. And I, I, and like, we had one of the women on our show. Corinne did an interview with her in June. You can go back and check that. It's a Plots and Politics episode if you want. Um, and I have heard other instances of this man harassing other people in our party.
Right.
So, but I've asked them and they didn't want to come for us. And I am very thankful that you decided to make your altercation public. It is hard, right? This is hard.
It is. It's scary in a number of different ways. And yeah, to your point, Sarah, I had had, so when I first was getting into politics and decided to run for office, I didn't know any politician. I didn't have any politician's cell phone number. You know, I was not inside with anybody. But I had a couple people who worked on my campaign as volunteers, who has either like been legislative assistants at the state house or things like that. And so those people warned me, they're like, hey, by the way, there are some creeps you need to stay away from.
Oh, wow.
Two people that they brought up, one was Thomas Cook, which, you know, if you haven't been following the Joe Hogs and Thomas Cook story, Google his name. He was the chief of staff who engaged in sexual harassment as well.
Okay.
And the second one was Greg Taylor. And so I'd heard just a bunch of really bad stories about Senator Taylor and, you know, like what he. I heard that he was.
What's happened to the internet?
Oh, no. I can hear you and I can see me. So I'm not sure what's going on. On my side, I see my camera moving, but I don't know if I'm connected well. Worth trying to refresh maybe? I'm gonna hit refresh and see if I can get back.
Hey, okay, we're working on internet. Sorry, everybody. Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I think I just lost internet.
Oh, no.
I don't know what happened. But anyway, as long as it works now, I won't do anything else. So, okay. Sorry about that. It was like a two-minute break. Oh. Oh, somebody said the audio's been choppy the whole time. Can you let us know if it's better now? Because if not, I'll do something else. Yeah, thanks Travis. Okay, so you were saying, you were talking about the two people you were warned.
Yep.
You were warned about Greg Taylor and the, is it, what's his name?
Thomas Cook, who was the mayor's former chief of staff in Indianapolis. Yeah. And both of those people.
He has multiple allegations against him as well, right?
So in other words, the rumors I heard were not just rumors. They ended up being very true. But the people that I heard Greg Taylor to have these bad altercations with were none of the six women. So I don't know if it's the same people you've talked to, Sarah, or if it's other people. But either way, it's, it's not limited to just a few people. There's a lot of people out there who's or anything, but it just seemed to be a very clear pattern to me. So because of that, after I saw the Indy Star articles, I believed them. Because again, I had talked to other women who'd had these experiences.
You had had your own, you had been warned with other people.
And so you brought up earlier, I do a pretty good job with social media. You know, there's 25 counselors on the Indy City Council. So, I mean, on the one hand, I do represent 36,000 people, which if you're in small town in Indiana, that's a lot of people. But in Indianapolis, I'm very much a small fish, right? But I do have kind of a, a big mouth and I talk a lot on social media and share my truth. And so I did post on social media that Greg Taylor should resign from office because this is an embarrassment and the Democratic Party shouldn't stand up for this.
Every elected official, every elected official that is, that works with this man should have also said that. They should have said he should resign. There's so many people alleging that he's done this. So brave on you for doing the right thing. Everyone should have done this. Did the Indiana State Democratic Party do this?
No, there were.
Have they done this since?
And, and that's my point is, you know, when I talked, and I'll get to that in a minute, but when I talked with the party insiders, it's like, well, you know, we can't force him to resign. I said, well, I didn't ask you to force him to. I just thought.
Say it. Say it. You should encourage it. You should help find like people to run in the primary against him. Like, let's get the bully out.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I, I have talked to people, I've even had like Karen Italian on this show. And they just kind of act like they have no power. And I'm like, well, that's the wrong way to act in this situation. You're the Indiana Democratic Party. You have a lot of power. You have a lot of social media. You get a lot of credit. You can say, we do not support this. We think he should resign. And instead, it's completely silent. So they're kind of allowing this person to continue bullying people and it looks like a sexually assaulting, allegedly sexually assaulting women that work under him to continue. I, I just kind of have a question for everybody that's remaining silent. Can you imagine your, uh, your daughter in her twenties wanting to get involved in politics? Would you push her to work under him?
Right.
I'm gonna guess these people that remained silent would not put a loved one in his staff.
And I've talked to so many party insiders on private conversations, you know, on social media, not where anybody else can see, who said, well, no, I would never let my daughter, I wouldn't let them even work in the state house. I wouldn't let anyone ride the elevator there. It's actually assaulted and harassed all the time. So you know that, it is your obligation then to say something publicly and change that system. So I, yeah, I agree with you, Sarah, and I'm really disappointed with a lot of powerful people.
I feel like a lot of it is old, the old school way of doing things. Like I've had people that I'm friends with message me before when I'm uncovering something not pleasant about the Democratic Party in Indiana say, we keep our skeletons in the closet. We keep these things privately. We, we handle these things privately behind this 2025. We got a lot of research on what's appropriate, what's not, what to do in the workplace when there's bullying and stuff. You have HR departments. There, there are tons and tons of records of information of the right way to handle things, and we are not doing it.
That's right. That's exactly right. But so I want to make it clear, you know, as much as I feel very strongly about this, I did not, you know, engage in some months-long campaign to work really hard to force him to resign. I literally.
You just said it.
And said, I think he should resign. This is an embarrassment, you know?
I think Destiny Scott Wells came out against. That's who I wanted to win Indiana Democratic chair. I kind of suspect if she were chair right now, things would be different.
I think so as well. Yeah. So, you know, that, that happened, I think it was like in December when the last Indy Star article came out that I last posted about it. Fast forward to March, when it was the Marion County Democratic Party Reorganization Meeting. So it's the big, you know, we have, uh, theoretically we should. We don't have all the slots filled. But this is when, every four years, the party votes to see who should be the new chair of the party, and vice chair, and secretary, and treasurer. And so it was a big, it was a contender. There were three different candidates for chair. There were like six or seven for secretary. It was a big contentious race. And it ended up, we were there for seven hours. It was the, it was a really brutal run meeting. It was a big nightmare, honestly. Nobody had had food. It was, it was a big mess. But when I was there, I saw Senator Taylor and he was wearing this like black puffy jacket over a red, I want to say hoodie. And I had met him before several times, actually. And, and often for good things, you know, I'm not saying, no, every person is a human being. There was no person who was just pure, I want to say, 2010. When I was doing some like union activism, trying to get a hotel union in downtown Indianapolis. And he had come in and actually been a really strong supporter of workers' rights. And he had really impressed me that day. You know, as a man, like he wasn't around women or anything. I don't, who knows? I don't know what he was up to or anything like that. But I had met him several times, but I also was nobody back then. You know, there was no reason he would remember having met me 15 years ago or whatever. But he kept like being just weird, like kind of making weird eye contact, I think it is. Until finally, like a little ways in, he came over to me and just said like, hey, are you Councilor Jesse Brown? I was like, hi Senator Taylor. Yes, we've met a few times before, but yes, I'm Jesse Brown. And, um, well, we've got some gross people in the chat being racist. But, uh, anyway, um, sorry, I found that a little distracting. We have, uh, you know, Greg Taylor walked over and asked if I was me. I was like, yes, I am. And he's like, well, I've got a big problem with you. I was like, pardon me? And he's like, why didn't you call me? I said, Senator, do I have your number? Like, we have met before, but we're not, we're not on a close friends basis or anything like that. Why would you, you know, what, what would I call you about? And he's like, well, I think that you should have called me if you had something to say about me. And we should have talked about this publicly. Or we should have talked about this privately first. And I said, Senator, I don't have your number. He's like, well, you could have gotten my number from any number of people. Don't play some of your public comments about me. I was like, oh. Well, you know, and again, there were hundreds of people in this room. Uh, it was at a big hotel convention center. And so I said, did you really want to have this conversation here publicly? If you want to get coffee or something, I will meet with you and talk with you about it. I'll meet with anybody, even if I really have strong disagreements. He said, no, well, there's no point now because you've already made your comments. But I really think it's inappropriate. You should have called me first. I was like, well, respectfully, Senator, you know, like, and I, and I told him what I told you, which is there were six different women who went through the Indy Star and none of, like those six represent people that were in addition to other people I know of who've had bad experiences with you. So, you know, I believed it and I, what, he's like, well, you didn't hear my side of the story. I was like, well, respectfully, Sarah, what, what, what could your side of the story possibly have been that would like sound, that would be fair or anything like that? Or that would change my mind? He's like, well, you know, I'm an elected official and so you owe me that respect and so you shouldn't have just done that.
Using the position, the power of the position to say, he deserves things he clearly doesn't.
Right. Yeah. So, you know, I was just like, well, I'm sorry you feel that way. I didn't mean it to be surprising. I'm honestly just shocked that not only you haven't resigned, but you're here in this room today. I know, like, there's a bunch of people around who, uh, aren't comfortable. And like, I know a lot of women don't want you here. He actually had been a precinct committee person, but had that stripped from him because so many people were upset with him. But he apparently was there as a guest of the chair anyway, despite not being a precinct committee person. So he wasn't voting. He didn't need to be in the room. And apparently he was just there to intimidate people based on how he treated me.
Yeah, so he probably saw it as a, like, go to anybody that said he should be, he should be, he should resign and go and like bully them because that seems to be his kind of personality.
That's what I assume because he, I mean, he, so he kept trying to complain and he's like, well, you know, the media, they'll just publish anything. I was like, respectfully, sir, no, they won't.
No, the Indy Star, Indy Star does not publish anything. They are very reputable paper.
100%. And so then, um, once it became clear that like I, you know, had my own like beliefs that wasn't going to change. He was like, well, you say you talked to all these women. What are the names of those women?
Oh, my gosh.
Whoa, you know, I'm not going to give you the names of women, especially based on how you're treating me right now.
Yeah, who else can I go and threaten? Give me some.
It seemed very clear to me that he was going to go threaten them or bully them about it. And so I was like, sir, I'm not going to do that. You know, they, they entrusted me with their confidence and I'm not saying, I'm not telling their story publicly because I don't think that would be appropriate either.
Right.
He's like, well, what do you think about the concept of due process? I was like, well, in a court of law, you get due process, but no one's accusing you. No one's going to take you to jail for this.
We just don't want you to use this position of power to keep hurting people.
And then he kind of started giving up. And so he asked a few times for, uh, you know, the names of the women, which was creepy, and I kept saying no. And then he shook my hand like four times during it. And he kept leaning in closer and just being like, well, you know, you're new to politics. I just want to give you some friendly advice because it can be really bad for you to make a powerful enemy. And I was like, well, you know, I, I'm aware. And he's like, what would you do? Like, for example, what if people like called for you to resign? And I was like, if I was credibly accused of, by six women of sexual harassment, I think I should resign, you know? He's like, oh, okay. Well, you know, what about if people put other pressure on you or did other things to you? And I was like, well, sir. And he's like, well, you, you just don't understand how bad it really is going to be for you since you have a powerful enemy now. Just friendly advice since you're so new. He repeated it like four or five times. He even said personally and politically. So I literally thought, this man is going to beat me up. Like, as an adult, like, it's very rare that I've like talked with somebody who I was like, this man is at least wanting me to be worried about whether he's going to use violence on me.
Which is how women feel all the time when we're talking to a man that is stronger than us. So yeah, I can identify with that. Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, so that freaked me out. And again, it was like a seven-hour-long meeting. So finally, like four hours later, it was time to leave. And, you know, I had talked to all my friends after I was, who were sitting near me. I was like, did you guys hear that? And they're like, well, I heard bits and pieces, but not all of it. I was like, he just threatened me and, you know? So I have a bunch of people who saw that I was, you know, having a, I was really freaked out by that experience right in public at a party event. And so when it was time to leave, again, it was a big convention, uh, conference room in the hotel. And so there were a bunch of doors out of the ballroom or whatever that we were all voting in. So I was going out one door, but Senator Taylor was going out another door. And then he turned and saw me and he walked over and made trail of the door. Oh, no. We lost it again? Yeah, you're frozen on my side. Wait, am I back?
Hey, can you hear me? Yeah, I can hear you. I'm so sorry. I think my internet at home, they're like working on it. So I think it just drops and then it comes back on. So sorry.
It's all good. But so anyway, so we're leaving. He goes to hold the door for me just to get in my face and he says, uh, oh, what's the matter? What's the matter, Counselor Brown? You look a little upset. What's the matter? Oh, are you upset? Going to cry, Counselor Brown? What's the matter? Are you upset? Like a middle school bully. And then he starts following me after I pass him. And so I stopped and I turned towards them and I said, well, Senator Taylor, what you said to me earlier, whether you meant it this way or not, I took that as a physical threat. So no, I'm not okay. I'm not sure I'm going to call the police or just report you to the party. But either way, like this is totally unacceptable and like there will be consequences for this. And so then, you know, I, I just planted my feet. I hadn't moved that whole time I said that. So he took another step and got right like.
Oh, my gosh.
You think I'm trying to intimidate you? Is that what you're saying? I was like, like, look at what you just did in, in response to what I said. How else am I supposed to react to that? And then he just like kept glaring me for a couple seconds though, and took a step back like I was crazy. Finding that problem. I literally, yeah, I went home and cried and like, you know, that doesn't happen very much. Like, he absolutely, yes, he wanted a reaction. I see in the chat. I did maybe like, I've, I've literally talked to a couple of party insiders who was like, who, who said they saw that portion of it and that they would have punched him because he was clearly starting a fight and getting in my personal space.
Well, he would have liked that because then he could have used that. He would have been the victim. If you would have.
Exactly right.
You would have done some type of violent act. So don't do that. Don't forget. So good job not doing that. Yeah.
Definitely don't do that. But like, I literally had, because I had been sitting next to somebody who was herself a victim of sexual assault from an elected official. And so she was, of course, really triggered by this and freaked out by it.
I love her. I'm so sorry.
And a friend hurt, give her a ride to her car so that she didn't have to walk by herself. And then I had a friend keep an eye on Greg Taylor. And I took like a super roundabout way to get back to my car because I was like, I'm going to get jumped on the way to my car. No, obviously threatening me at this point. So I got home, I immediately write, wrote up a full description of what happened.
I was gonna say, because you seem to know exactly. And this happened a while ago. So smart on you.
Yeah. And so then I immediately, uh, reached out to politicians I knew and to leaders I knew. And I was like, what do you think I should do with this? And I was like, you know, I, I've worked with IMPD. I know they're, they're good officers, but they're busy. What are they really?
I agree with you. I've had to too, because we get like scary threats, social media, Harrison County Democrats get scary threats. And, and they're too busy with like real actual crimes than like, so I get it.
Yeah. So, you know, so I was like, I'm, I'm not going to report him to the police. I don't like, it probably is against the law to threaten people like that and harass people like that. But whatever, that'd be a huge pain to try to get there. So I was like, well, I know I get a reputation of like trying to make Democrats look bad and just like going right to the press and, and running my mouth. So I was like, well, I've heard that we're trying to get an ethics committee within the Democratic Party. And so I'm just going to report it, report it to the party and let the ethics committee.
I, I had the people, like the people running for chair and I had Karen Italian on. They all were touting this ethics committee thing. So did it do anything to help you or this situation?
Well, it took months, right? Because, uh, Mike Schmull was in his last couple of days. You know, they were just about to do the state party chair election the next week. And so, you know, then Karen Italian said, hold on, just give me a little bit to get my feet under me. We have to get it. And I was like, that's reasonable. You know, you're brand new at the job. I'm not going to say you have to immediately get things right. So it took a little while, but then finally in July, uh, they interviewed me. And they had had me go through a couple of processes and like submit a written statement. And then they invited me to an interview at 8:00 AM at the state party headquarters downtown. Uh, and they said I could bring witnesses if I wanted to. I was like, well, I mentioned witnesses in my, you know, narrative because there were people who saw, especially the second part. They overheard all of it and saw it. The first part, they saw the body language and caught bits and pieces, but they were like, I feel weird witnessing and, you know, like, because I didn't have it in context.
Right. They didn't hear everything. They just saw some stuff. It's all confusing. There was a bunch of people around. Not everybody heard. There wasn't somebody that like heard every single word. He did that on purpose. He leaned in close, talked quietly to you so other people could hear it.
And we were the only two people within, you know, nobody was closer than my friends, right? But so then I gave a, a hour-long interview to the, the little subcommittee of the ethics committee who took me seriously. And I think they were all great people who like really asked good questions. They're like, okay, well, this is consistent with what you wrote down back in March. And, you know, like, we think you're operating in good faith. Uh, thanks so much for this and we'll follow up with next steps. I didn't know this at the time, but that afternoon, then they interviewed Greg Taylor. And Greg Taylor apparently did bring a witness. And he brought apparent, I don't know who it is to this day, but another elected official who claims to have been there the whole time during the first part and that he never said anything threatening to me. So that is just straight up a lie. Like, like, it's not like, oh, I, I heard it one way. They heard it the other way. Like, first off, there was no other elected official even close enough to hear it. And second of all, if you were close enough to hear it, I mean, he repeated himself four or five times. I even had a friend who was like, I definitely heard him say those words. I just didn't know the context. He claims he never said the words. So it's just a lie. It's, it's not like bad, like, you know, bad hearing or something like that. They are lying to try to cover him. And, you know, I don't blame the ethics subcommittee because, you know, he had two people saying one thing and I had one person on the other side.
Yeah, but the same hand, there's all this other stuff about this man. There's so much about him. It's not like it's just you against nobody, you know? I mean, there's some evidence.
And they didn't reach out to me to say, hey, he's claiming this. Can you prove that's wrong? Or is there anything you'd like to add to your story, you know? Or like, I, you know, I knew I wasn't going to, it's not a court of law. I was not going to be in there cross-examining him or something. But like, I could at least say, you know, I, I have 10 witnesses who could say there was no elected official close. you know, I I have ten witnesses who could say there was no elected official close who could, you know.
Yeah, you could have rebutted it with, none of us saw that person.
Right.
There. So you could have, you know, discredited his um witness.
Testimony. Yeah, exactly. His witness, right? So um, so that's all bad enough. But then also, they like sent me the the final disposition for the ethics committee's report, which was basically, we can't prove anything bad happened, so nothing's gonna happen. We're not gonna even like lecture him or give him a slap on the wrist or anything. Uh, they put it in the mail and I I believe that they really did put it in the mail, but, you know, USPS has had some issues lately. I never got it. It never got to my house. And so it was September before, like, I I finally emailed them to follow up. And I said, hey, I know this is a brand new process. I'm pretty sure mine was the very first complaint that the ethics committee heard. Um, so I was like, it's a brand new process. I know things are taking longer than you mean, but like, you gave me a deadline and we're now past that deadline. You know, what, when can I expect to hear back from you? They're like, oh, you should have gotten that back in July. That's like, so you just sent something in the mail in July, never followed up with me.
I mean, it's pretty easy to send an email and say like, like, cocky isn't in the email too.
Yeah, I don't understand why you wouldn't.
Just the one, the slow mail, the one thing that was it.
The only way they notified me.
And no, like, what is that mail where you pay a little extra to make sure they get it?
Certified mail?
When they get certified mail. That would have been maybe nice since this is so important.
Yeah.
So, okay, so they did at least, you know, they did do some things. They have got this ethics committee. Good job. They did listen to you and respectful to you. They probably don't know what to do when somebody comes with a witness and they're lying. They probably don't know what to do with that. So they need to handle that better. So maybe make some adjustments to the ethics committee. Uh, give you some time to say, here's what they're saying. Is there proof, you know?
Yeah.
And then they need to do a better job of letting you know when it's, when they've figured out what they're gonna do. So there's some room for improvement. Not saying people are awful. I'm appreciative that they've got this ethics committee.
Right.
So these six women that have bravely come forward on these Indy Star reports, when we know in our culture, we like to attack, we like to attack women or anybody that comes out against someone that's in a position of power when they come out and say something um true, you know, about what happened to them. We like to attack them. Our culture does. So that's pretty brave of them. Are they supposed to go through the Democratic Ethics Committee now in order to get the Indiana Democrats to do the right thing? Like, like, what, what are next steps here? What do we do to put pressure on the Indiana Democratic State Party to do better?
Right. I mean, and that was my point is, and again, I wanna make it clear, I think that like the chair of the ethics committee and all the members of the ethics committee that I talked with are good people who really were trying their best to do the right thing.
Yeah.
But it didn't work, right? Like, the process is broken because I was like, this was the most blatant possible thing in public to an elected official, to a cis hetero white man, elected official. You know, like, like, I'm I'm the hardest person to victimize in our society. And if I can't get justice like for some very basic like lies that happened, you know, and again, it's not about me because he never would have even known who I was or come up to me, except for the fact that I was standing up for the women that he had done this to. And so.
And I'm so thankful. Like, as all women, all women, I think we, I just wanna acknowledge, thank you for sticking up
Thanks.
against this bully because we need you. We need men in this fight. We are repeatedly told to just be quiet and go away. And so I I just wanna acknowledge it's, I really appreciate that you're doing this because you had to admit vulnerability. You had to admit a man coming up to you and kind of like intimidating you and you were worried you were gonna get beat up. And like, you like admitted your feelings. I think that's really brave of you. So just thank you. And I just wanna, again, I've done this before on shows, offer my support to anybody that has been bullied ever, particularly the people that have been bullied by this man in the Indiana Democratic Party.
Well, thank you. I mean, I feel like it was the bare minimum I could have done. Um, you know.
But a lot of people don't do that. Because think about, I'm sure you're not the only, I'm assuming you're not the only white man. I'm sure you're not the only man that's been bullied and just quietly keeps it to themselves. It is hard. It is hard to come out and say, this person did this to me. And I kinda wanna talk just a little bit about these personality types because they get into roles of power by intimidating, by threatening, and they scare most people. So most people stay silent. They don't want, like, there's a lot of like blackmail, bribery type stuff behind the scenes. Like, they find dirt on you and act like they're gonna come out and and say the dirt if you go against them. There's a lot of that going on. I have a lot of that in Harrison County politics right now. And uh, so it's, it's hard. So we kind of need to, I just wanna, let's examine this personality type. And what do we do to stop it? You're doing a good example. You're making it public. You went, Indy Star reported on this and did a story. So thank you, Indy Star. You followed up with the ethics committee. I didn't see the Indy Star thing. I saw your stuff because I always see your social media stuff. So good job for putting it on there. We're doing this show. We're shining a light on the actual truth, the behavior that's bad, that needs to be held accountable. So that's a big, big part of it. Why do people not do it? Like, so many people are bullied. Why do people not stand up? And 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 we need to realize and have empathy for them. Because I have friends that have been bullied that don't come out and say what was done to them. I'm sure you do too, you know? And I, on one hand, I get it. And on also, I'm really privileged. I don't have to worry about getting fired from a job for speaking out. That's a lot of, that's a lot of what this comes from. Or like your reputation being tarnished or people not believing you. Or, you know, like, we just kinda need to look at our culture and recognize there are reasons people stay silent.
Oh, yeah.
And if I was, if I was a woman that was assaulted, it would, it would be, it would take me a long time to decide if I wanted to to say something vulnerable like that. I mean, we gotta acknowledge how hard that is. I mean.
And the way, like, I didn't get to actually, you know, see the whole transcript of what Senator Taylor said to the ethics committee, but I just got a little summary, you know? And he claims, because the part that I was like, and I did have a witness who was ready to talk about the second part where he got in my face like that. He claims that he was like, well, no, you just obviously looked upset. Counselor Brown looked upset and I was genuinely concerned for him. So I was just asking out of concern. And, you know, total crap, you know, that's total BS. Um, but I've talked to other elected officials who've worked with Greg Taylor who said that like, he just operates in this weird gaslighty way that makes you question yourself. You know, was I misremembering or maybe I'm racist or something? It was just like, I can't handle talking to a black man.
So that's a technique. Yeah, that's a technique we need to examine. They're really good at gaslighting. They, they turn it so that they're the victims and you're the bad person really well. They're also good at like taking a little bit of truth and twisting it so that they're the good people and you're the bad. And, and like, they are so convincing, like, really good actors. Like Academy Award type stuff over here, we're seeing from these type of people. And we need to acknowledge that. And it's so hard because we don't wanna admit that we were tricked. So I think that's another aspect of this. We don't wanna admit, you know, or maybe he was nice to them that one time, or he, he came to their event and spoke at their event and that was a big favor. And so they hold on to that and they're like, well, I can't go against him. He's doing this nice thing or he did that nice thing that one time. And, and it's such a, it's just so hard. Like, if it wasn't hard, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now. Greg Taylor wouldn't be in this position of power anymore. And he still is. Like, he would, he would be our minority leader in the state senate if those Indy Star reports didn't come out, right?
Yes, absolutely, he would. He still was, even after the Indy Star came out for a little while. It it took a lot of effort even for them to take a vote to remove him as minority leader. Yeah. And I mean, to, you know, I think one piece of this is, and it's very easy to have happen in politics, is individuals get so much of an ego and they'd be like, they are just so important. And the the most important thing in the world is for them to keep their seats. And then they can think about other people too. It's like, well, yeah, you know, Greg Taylor has all these problems. But we have so few Democrats in this state. We have to protect the ones we have, you know, like, oh, there's so few black men in politics. We have to protect the ones we have.
Find another one.
There are so many, like, I.
There's so many great black men out there.
Friends of mine who could do a hundred times that. Yes, right.
Let's find some and encourage them to primary and let's give them support. I mean, yeah, that's so stupid because he's in an area where Democrats get elected.
Oh, yeah. He's in an area where sometimes he doesn't even get a Republican on the ballot. Sometimes it's uncontested, you know?
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, so that's a really poor excuse. And let's just use the facts. It it's like we're so worried about the other side saying bad things about us that we can't be truthful and open and honest. Do the right thing.
Yes.
If you look at favorability of the Republican Party, nationally, low. Democrat Party, nationally, low. I think a big part of that is because we don't trust either party. I don't trust the Indiana Democrats, even though I consider myself, one, I'm running for state house again. And I have major problems with how the party is being ran. We have to call it out. Like, I think it makes more of an impact when I am on this team and I'm calling it out. And if I mess up, I will say, I messed up. I'm sorry. But for some reason, these people in charge don't know how to do that. They think it's like the biggest weakness instead of seeing it as a strength. You came out and did some funny thing with the council. You're like, if this person votes the right way, I'll make a public apology. I'll do this and this. And then you came out and you said, guess what? I'm making a public apology because this person that I thought was gonna vote wrong, voted right. And it was wonderful. Yeah. So you're leading by example, is what I'm saying. We can do this. And if we took a poll, how many people like Indiana Democrats? How many people like city councillor Jesse Brown? I'm gonna guess people are gonna like you more because guess what? You're you're yourself. You're your authentic, moral, good person who admits wrong and tries to do good. And it's like, I, it's just like, you're modeling what we should be doing, but do they have the, do they have too much of an ego? Can they let their egos go and be like, you know what? Let's make some changes and let's do the right thing. And and that's why I'm having the show today. I'm not trying to bully anybody. I'm not trying to say Indiana Democrat people are terrible. I'm friends with a bunch of them. I love them. I I'm not, I I even, I like Karen Italian. She seems like a nice woman. I'm thankful she's doing what she's doing. It's not that I have, I wanna go after them with vengeance. It's, we could do better. Let's work together and do better. Can you give us a brief update? You guys, I did a show with Jesse in March where, when he was newly elected to the city council, he was trying to do some positive changes and the Democrats wanted to silence him and they were taking him off committees. And then I had you on the show to explain it and you kinda used the people to come to meetings to kinda stop them. But can you update us? Are you on a bunch of committees now? Are they working with you better? What what's going on? Because I live in southern Indiana, not Indianapolis.
Sure. Well, I wanna be fair to everybody, right? And so first, let me start with the praise thing, which is just this week, I was able to lead. It ended up being a coalition of twenty-three out of twenty-five councillors. So I actually got all the Republicans on the council to sign and all but two of the Democrats to sign. And honestly, I think those two Democrats were out of town. They just never would text or email me back for a week. So that, that's another story that I'm a little frustrated with. But at least we got, you know, nobody said no. But we got all of us to push back against an electric bill rate increase. And so I was able to kinda take some leadership there and and people worked with me just fine and and were very kind and and gracious about it. And so I wanna say thank you to all of them. And again, you know, any critiques I have are not just, you are a bad human person and you need to go to hell and I want bad things to happen to you. That's never, ever what I mean. I just think that if you're doing something wrong politically, you should be held accountable. Um, you know, still wish you the best as a human being. And, you know, I'm I'm a Christian. I still believe in redemption and and what, you know, I love you. I want you to do well.
You're just trying to hold the work accountable, like you do in your job.
So, you know, when I first got elected, uh, I was only put on three committees. And a- as you mentioned, they were very clearly gonna try to take those committees away from me. Uh, but when every Republican got elected onto the council, they are put on at least six committees. And the only reason that uh that that's not required by law or anything like that, uh, the only reason is because they wanted to have independents or or different political perspectives on all the committees, since there's a lot more Democrats than Republicans in Indianapolis. But then they kicked me out of the caucus. I don't get to caucus with Democrats, even though I'm an elected Democrat.
They kicked you out of the caucus? I saw that when I was looking up stuff about you and I was like, is that true?
Oh, yeah. Yep. So they don't invite me to their closed-door meetings.
The councillors, like the councillors voted? Is that who did it?
Uh huh. Yeah, it was like a thirteen.
Vote at the next meeting and put you back on?
They could, but they they haven't. Nobody's introduced, as far as I know, a motion to bring me back on the caucus. And so, you know, hurts, obviously. I'm like, out, okay.
My feelings?
But, you know, uh, whatever, if they think that I'm not actually a Democrat, if they think that I'm not, you know, entitled to do what my constituents want me to do, well, then I'm sure, then surely I deserve at least as much representation as a Republican, right?
So you should be on six committees like the Republicans.
Uh huh. They refuse to. They have not ever explained why publicly. They've not ever explained why privately. It's just, we don't like you. So we're not gonna give you as much political power. But I am a representative of my district, right? And so, you know, your your personal beef with me is actually disenfranchising thirty-six thousand people on the near east side of Indianapolis. And so, no, they haven't moved at all from that. Um, and, you know, and again, it's just, you know, and again, and, you know, like Karen Italian.
It just kinda seems, it seems a little petty. I I'm I'm having some petty problems with Indiana Democrats, the central committee. I see some pettiness, especially with Destiny Wells, with what they did with her. A lot of petty, taking it personal, taking things personal when we're just trying to make the the state better.
That's right. There was a uh Teamsters one thirty-five went on strike. They're actually on strike on two different locations right now. People should go visit them in Shelbyville at the Horseshoe Casino, um, or at uh Bruin, up at Twenty-Fifth and uh Andrew J. Brown here in Indianapolis. But I was on the picket line um with the Teamsters at this big rally at Twenty-Fifth and Andrew J. Brown. Uh, a couple of different of my friends who are elected officials came out there. You know, Representative Mitch Gore came out. Um, there were a few other people who came out and Chair Italian actually came down to the picket line, which I thought was awesome. But then the the Democratic House Dems uh social media took pictures that didn't have me in it, even though I've been there longer than anybody else. I was the first elected official to be on that picket line.
They should, if they were smart, they would highlight you. You're more popular.
Yeah, I was like, this is me. We're both on the same side on this one. We're both giving speeches and supporting each other, you know?
I would have shared that on my Facebook because I saw that post. I would have shared it if you were on it. I didn't share it. So, I mean, they're hurting themselves here. You're more popular. They're probably taking that personally. I don't know.
Right, which, you know, like, on the, on the things we disagree with, sure, disagree with me and you can, you know, cut me out or whatever. But like, why not work together when it makes sense to work together?
To put the people first? Shock.
You would think, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm uh, I'm thankful you're still with us. I'm thankful you're using your position of power. I know you're making a lot of friends. You might not be making a lot of friends on the council or at the very top of the Indiana Democrat Central Committee, which I have to say, same, probably. Um, but you are making a lot of friends. A lot of people know you in the state, the people that elected you. I know are really proud of you. You're doing more for shining a light on issues, um, for caring about your district. I was reading about you and and you said one of your main things that you care about is quality of life, life expectancy. You were saying life expectancy is lower in some of your areas where where you're representing and you wanna help with that. And I just think that's really beautiful and amazing. And I, I mean, I wanna help Indiana Democrats get elected in Indiana. That's why I'm having you on. I'm not doing it to be like, shame on you. Look at you, terrible. No, 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 no. Let's get better. Let's, you know, next time we're at an event and Jesse Brown is there, put him as the first picture. Because that's gonna help Indiana Democrats be more popular. And we need popularity because we need votes to win elections. So it doesn't matter how many people in your tiny little circle like you, because that tiny little circle doesn't get Democrats winning in this state. Um, so we, you know, I think I, I, it might, I'm not trying to sound demeaning, but like, seriously, therapy, therapy would help.
For real, for real.
And like, I read the book, um, The Four Agreements, where it's like, don't take things personally, don't judge. Am I saying it right? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I think so. Be impeccable with your word as well. Yeah, uh huh.
Yeah, like, I think, just like, if you don't have time for therapy, audiobook, plug it in while you're doing your laundry or whatever. It, just like a couple of things on how to live a healthier life, I think would help our state tremendously. And then also, um, if you are facing a bully in your life, in your workplace, in your home life, there are so many great resources online. There's, I would, I would say this seems to be like somebody that's narcissistic. I'm not a psychologist, so I can't. But they do say, experts say, one in ten people exhibit narcissistic sociopathic tendencies. And they tend to be very good actors. And and they're always the victim. They always twist the things so that it's, you're bad, I'm good. You better feel bad and have two things for me. It's just constant that. And there are so many good sources online for free. You know, like, I follow some guy that like just teaches narcissistic stuff all the time in little short videos. And I'm like, oh. You know, like I follow some guy that like just teaches narcissistic stuff all the time in little short videos. And I'm like, oh, you broke that down really well. That can help us. I think it's a, a human flaw where we just wanna assume everybody's good. We just wanna assume this Greg Taylor guy is a good guy because he's got a D-Bas name because he's black and we support that, you know? And it's like, no, one in ten people are most likely, don't have empathy for others, but they act like they do. You know what I mean? Wha- what do you think?
And, and the, the structures are how we keep people like that in check, right? So if, if we had a system where you knew, if you acted like that at a party event, you were gone. You know, or if you knew that like now everybody is gonna call you to resign, you know, like, then you won't act like that. Like even, even bullies respect boundaries when they can see them clearly held.
Because they care about themselves the most.
Right.
So like, so like Greg Taylor doesn't wanna lose his position, but since he can get away with bullying people and there's no accountability, he's gonna keep doing it. So even if he stayed in his position of power, but was held accountable from now on, that's better.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
There hasn't been any change to show that's happening, right? There's no reason for Greg Taylor to treat people better right now.
Right. Yeah. I mean, like, that was my, and I wasn't trying to, and I, and I know, I was the first ever ethics complaint. They are interested in changing it and fixing it. I'm not saying they're bad people or they've set me up to fail or anything like that.
Not at all. They can fix it. It's brand new. Yep.
I said, you know, if, if, as of the, how the Ethics Committee is right now, if a victim or a survivor, you know, came in and was like, hey, I think about filing a complaint, I would say, don't. Like, go to the police, go to someplace else, because right now the party's not doing it right. So until they get that fixed, you know, like, be careful. And, and I, I said that privately first because I was like, we need to make some changes because right now it's not serving survivors. Um, and the last point is, you know, and I know, Sarah, you do such a great job of being nonpartisan and recognizing good people, no matter what ballot line they're running under, and I appreciate that and I love that about you. And, you know, I just wanna say, I, I talked to the Chair of the Ethics Committee who really asked me not to go to the press with this, not to make it public. Um, because they said, well, look at like how the super majority is, is treating us right now. They're doing this redistricting. They're, you know, ICE is everywhere. Like, we don't want Republicans to have more power. We have to be a united front. And, and what I said was, look, I agree. I agree that we don't want Republicans to have this like unfettered power. But that's exactly why we need to be public about this. And we need to hold our own accountable. Because there's too many people, you can look at our voting turnout. It's so low in this state. Too many people.
We don't have hope. We don't have a reason to vote Democrat right now. Yeah.
Right. So we have to hold ourselves better. And, you know, while we're in the super minority, this is actually the best time to hold an elected official accountable.
Yeah. Let's clean it up now. We can't get any worse.
Right. Exactly.
We can get better. We could, I, I feel like we're doing the same things over and over again and expecting different results. When we should be making major changes, we should be following those like Destiny Wells that like have figured out things that are very smart and are willing to lead us.
Yeah.
This is the time to call it out, fix our stuff and lead. Because Hoosiers want this. They want the way you're leading. And we need to model that. We should all be looking at, let's use you as an example. This is how we run when we have power. Even when the others, our side doesn't like it, we push them to be better. And if they don't rise up to the occasion, maybe we vote better people in the next election. Okay, I have last question before we go. Let's say people in Indy, maybe even people in your district, the east side, they're listening to this and they want you on at least six committees. Can you tell them what they can do?
Yeah, they can email, uh, the President of the Council, Vop Osili, just Vop, V O P dot O S I L I at Indy.gov, I N D Y dot G O V, and Maggie dot Lewis at Indy.gov. So that is the President of the Council and the Democratic Majority Leader. Those are two out of three votes on who gets on committees. So if they decide to put me on more committees, I'm on more committees. It's those two people who are personally deciding to keep me and my district unrepresented.
Do these people need to be in Indiana, in Indianapolis, in your district for it to count?
I mean, there is no force that can compel them to do this. So they could choose to make up any excuse they want for why they're ignoring people. I can tell you, hundreds of people have already emailed them about this and they've not even gotten a response. Um, but at the very least, you know, let, let them know people are still paying attention to this and still care. I'd appreciate it.
I would say even if you're not an Indian, you care about this and you care about Jesse or this state, I would say, go ahead and email them. Um. I want you on more committees. I, I, my brother lives in Indy. I go up there. I see people suffering. I see that things could be better. Um, and it means a lot to me that you're fighting to make the city better. And it's upsetting to me that your power is being limited by people on our side. Let's get over it. Let's do the right thing. Um, also, you weren't, just like me, I've read you were a former teacher. Is that true?
Yeah, I was. I actually, even though I'm a huge public education fan, uh, I actually worked in a charter school for three and a half years. So I was a, I was a teacher in a charter.
I taught at a Catholic school for eighteen years.
Okay, yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, and I'm trying everything I can to save public education. So that's funny. So I, that's neat. So if you're watching this and you're like, I get you a better job than some of these people in power that, you know, they're talking about, um, please run for something. This is the time.
Yes.
Get involved in your political party, whatever side it might be, and get yourself on the ballot for this next primary. It's gonna be May fifth. It, you start like signing up for it in the new year, like in January, you fill out your paperwork for it and you get on the ballot. Um, you don't have to be an expert. You weren't Jesse. You didn't know a whole lot. You just followed Bernie Sanders, which I did too. He made me get more involved. I really believed in what he was doing. I love that man. I hope he lives a lot longer. Makes me nervous getting older. And, um, and, and you don't have to be an expert. You just have to be like, oh, I could be better than that. You know, um.
If you're interested.
Yeah, I would love.
I was just gonna shoot me an email because, yeah, I, I, I will give my best tips to anybody who wants to run for office. And that includes if you wanna run in my district, I think you could do a better job than me. You might be right. I, I would love to give you all my tips and, and make sure I'm not like hiding things from you or making your job harder. I, I think democracy works better when there's a healthy, you know, debate.
I'm glad there's primaries.
So, let me help you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's really beautiful. That shows you're here for the right reason. You're not here for power. You're not here to make it about you, to make it a narcissistic me, me, me. Are you trying to not believe me? Listen, no, no, you're trying to actually help the people in your district that need help. And we need more Jesse Browns in office. So he's gonna help you. I will help you. Hopefully, your political party has a, has a county party. That's where I would go if you're thinking about running for something. I know that I'm on leadership team in Harrison County Dems. We're having a meeting November eleventh at six at the Harrison County Community Foundation to help answer questions for anybody thinking about running for something. And then we help you with the paperwork. So, you know, there are places out there that will help you. You don't need to know everything. Also, like your clerk's office helps you. My Republican-led county clerk's office is nothing but help every time I go there. You can legit just get all your paperwork filed there. They can take you through the whole thing. So don't let paperwork scare you. Um, we need, we need people, you, listening, you clearly care if you're listening to this. We need you to run for something and we needed you to help find other people, right? I mean.
One hundred percent. Yeah. Yeah. We, we need good people. And yeah, like you said, it doesn't need to be, you don't need to be an expert because you're an expert at your own life and that's what's missing in our state government is people who have a real world experience and really know what it's like.
Or like a regular person. Yeah, yeah. We need people with like different incomes in positions of power. This is really important. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a really good point. Also, all you have to do is be willing to learn. Don't go in there thinking you know everything. That's holding us back. People are like, well, I know. This is how we've always done it. I'm not changing. And that's hurting us so much. We've got to be like, I'm willing to learn new things. I bet you've learned a lot.
Oh my God. Every single month, I look back at like Jesse Brown one month ago. I was like, man, that fool didn't know anything. I know twice as much now. And I figure as long as that keeps being true every month, I'm on the right trajectory, you know, so.
I remember how like naive I was like a year ago and how I thought all these people in charge cared about us. I'm like, oh, poor Sarah, whole night. And then people come to me with stories, like they're shocked. Their political person in power didn't care about them. And I'm like, oh, that's so sweet. You thought they cared about you. I'm like, oh, it's like, we laugh so we don't cry, you guys. Laugh so we don't.
Exactly, right.
But yeah, I've learned a lot this year, especially I worked so hard to get Destiny elected. I was talking to people on the phone for hours. I, and I was crying. I was crying when she didn't get it. And Tim Peck was in, had had major surgery. I physically could not talk to him. He was in so much pain. I told his wife, I was like, don't tell him. Don't tell him. She's like, he's in so much pain and his pain medicine's burning up and he's in, he's just yelling. I'm like, don't tell him what happened then.
Yeah.
But, uh, oh, man. Good times, good times. But, but you're making a difference. So if you're not following Jesse Brown on social media, it's Jesse for Indy. What is it? What's your stuff?
Yep. Uh, Jesse for Indy on pretty much all socials. Or you can find, uh, it's like me with a megaphone or, or yelling on, uh, Facebook. So it's pretty easy to see which Jesse.
Yeah, he's on almost everything. Yeah, so follow him. His, uh, his social media is a great example of how we do this. Yeah.
Well, you're very sweet. Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, I'm really proud of you, my friend. Um, please message me, call me if you ever need a friend. Like, I can't believe you went through that March thing. That sounds rough. And I also know that like if I get accosted, if I have hard stuff, which I do, I could talk to you because not everybody gets how hard it is, but also wonderful, right? Are you glad you're doing what you're doing? I mean, we heard a pretty terrible story, but.
No, it, it, yeah, there's been, like, there's been more kinda emotional roller coasters in this job than, you know, again, I'm thirty-nine, about to turn forty in a couple months. And these last couple of years have been the most probably exciting of my life, good and bad. Uh, but I wouldn't change it for the world. I'm so honored to have the opportunity to serve the public and I might not have that forever. So I'm trying to make every day count. And really just consider it a blessing.
You are literally my, my favorite elected official. Well, and then I also really love Triva Hodges. Like you, you and Triva Hodges are my favorite. Um, you're both very transparent and you give really clear messaging. And, and, and Triva has also, she had a lot of like bullying and harassment from a Jamie Knoll, that bad sheriff that's in, uh, jail now. He tried to handpick somebody.
I've heard that name. Okay.
Yeah, he tried to handpick somebody to run against her for mayor. And she won more this time than the last time. But she was like actually at his trial. Like, she actually got up and spoke because like her husband ran against him for sheriff when he was still sheriff and he won. Jamie Knoll won reelection before he got arrested. So they've been through some stuff. So she also knows what it's like to take on some bullies.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll have to get connected. That's, that's a good, good tip.
Okay, I gotta let you go because I know you're busy. Um, props to you. I think everybody listening is gonna understand. And, um, please, if you are watching and you have any power, give Jesse Brown at least six committees. I want people, I want his district to be represented. That's not fair. Also, you're doing a great job. And you're willing to work with them. It's not like you're gonna go bully them or shame them or be mean. You're gonna be nice and work with them and, and put all the, you know, it's water under the bridge. You don't care. But so give him his committees. Um, also Democrat, Indiana Democrat State Party, can you please hold Greg Taylor accountable? We're supposed to be the party that gives a crap about these types of allegations. We're supposed to be the side that cares. Not looking too great that we're silent.
No.
Let's fix it now before the next election. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thanks, you guys. Um, oh, do you know this? We're a Substack, Jesse Brown. You can go to projectnextindiana.com. Put in your email and you'll get all our episodes sent to you as emails. You can read the summary and watch whichever ones you want. We got plenty of different types of things. Oh, my gosh. And before, sorry, I know you're busy. Got one more thing. Before we go tomorrow at twelve, I am doing an episode with the Helpful Hippie. Have you heard of her? Helpful Hippie?
I have, I have. Not super close, but yeah.
She keeps her name and her identity private for her own protection. She's been big in organizing, especially in Evansville. Um, she has had a lot of far to the right bullies. Um, some of them have extremely giant Trump fans. One guy in particular has been to the insurrection. He was a witness during the Charlie Kirk assassination. He went to his funeral. He is like named one of the biggest Trump fans in the country. And this guy was at a protest with her and others and something beautiful happened. Where this guy realized the Helpful Hippie is not the enemy. And we're gonna share that story and how we do this. How do we get these people that have been told we're the boogeyman? And they should fear us and maybe even hurt us. How do we help lessen the violence? And we do it through at love and empathy and compassion, the Martin Luther King way, even though it's very, very difficult. That protects everybody. And we gotta protect Helpful Hippie. We have to protect her and keep her safe. And so this is how we do it. We lessen the tone. So I'm extremely excited about that episode tomorrow. Shout out to Scott Johnson. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thanks, Jesse. Have a great day. Bye, you guys.
Bye.